Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, November 14th, 2017.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. It's nice to see so many of you here. We are excited to have scouts from Troop 1530 with us this evening and they're going to come down and lead the pledge for us. So come on down, gentlemen. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'd like to take a moment to welcome Mike Vanderpool, who's with us this evening, from the firm Vanderpool Frostig Nishani and PC. He's filling in for our town attorney who is out of town this evening. So, welcome, and we'll try to keep it to a dull roar while you're here. It's always nice to see you. Thank you for coming. We have a couple of sets of minutes up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the October 17th work session minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the October 24th public hearing minutes?
So moved. One second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion also carries. We have a couple of presentations tonight. The first item is a proclamation to recognize Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, December 7th, 2017, and I will recognize Councilmember Davidson to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, December 7th, 2017. Each year, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is designated throughout the United States to remember and honor all those who died or were injured in the attack that occurred at Pearl Harbor near Honolulu, Hawaii, just before 8:00 a.m. on December 7th, 1941. In this attack, more than 2,400 American military personnel were killed and more than 1,200 were wounded. The attack on Pearl Harbor destroyed nearly 20 American naval vessels, including eight battleships and almost 200 airplanes. December 7th, 1941 was a date that would live in infamy, as President Franklin Delano Roosevelt told an anxious nation after the attack. On December 8th, 1941, Congress approved President Roosevelt's declaration of war on Japan. Three days later, Japanese allies, Germany, and Italy declared war against the United States, and Congress reciprocated. Therefore, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim December 7th, 2017, as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day in the Town of Herndon. And the call on all citizens to honor this day, which marks the 76th anniversary of the attack on the United States Armed Forces at Pearl Harbor, pay tribute with appropriate observances and activities and express unending appreciation for the selfless sacrifices of those who served, fought, and lost their lives during this war. Further, the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim that the town shall annually observe the 7th of December as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Salute WWII veterans, along with those brave individuals who have served or continue to serve in our armed forces, and thank them for their courage and dedication to our country. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Mr. Davidson?
This proclamation urges all citizens to honor Pearl Harbor Day on December 7th. Just four years ago, the Herndon High School Band represented the Commonwealth of Virginia in the Pearl Harbor Day Parade in Hawaii, an event of which Herndon is particularly proud. This attack changed the course of the United States' history and that of the world. Today, we still struggle with some of the results of WWII and enjoy the benefits of others. I urge all citizens to take some time on this day to reflect on the sacrifices made, the conduct of the war itself, and the results of WWII that still frame the world we live in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I really appreciate this day as well. It's a somber day. It's a day that affected many lives and maybe some people in this room. It definitely affected my family in that my father was 11-years-old when Pearl Harbor happened, and his brother Jim, two years later, was called up by the Navy and was wounded in Guadalcanal and died from his wounds in Bethesda Naval Hospital. My Uncle Jim Tarby was in the Army Air Corps and paid the ultimate sacrifice and was killed in the plester oilfields in Romania in 1944. And my Uncle John, who survived, and he was in a bloody bucket, Pennsylvania, I think 26th Reserve, was in D-Day and then was in the Battle of La Bulge. My hometown was affected immensely in that many sons of mothers and fathers never came home, and it's a day I think that should be a reminder to ourselves about our own humanity, about how things can happen, more importantly. Take a deep breath and realize what democracy actually means to us, and to be kinder to each other, and to listen, because we had a common cause in 1941, and I think we need one today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Ms. Olem?
My father also served during WWII, and he was stationed in Hawaii. Fortunately for him, he got there late in the war just because of his age, but he and his brother both enlisted, graduated a year early from high school, because my father wanted to join the Navy and his brother wanted to join the Air Force, so they were finished up a whole year ahead so that they could go join up in the branch of the service they wanted. And I know my mom would always tell me about people that she knew in our community that had been stationed at Pearl Harbor on this day when this happened. So, we've always talked about it at my home. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Well, I appreciate that the town, every year, annually, without fail recognizes Pearl Harbor Day. I really associate myself with the comments made by Mr. McKenna. It's good to remember those that fought for us and some of the hardships we've gone through, and I appreciate that the town council entertains this proclamation each and every year. So thank you. I believe some members of the American Legion posts are planning to be here, but I don't see Commander Womack, unless I'm blind. Is there anyone here from the American Legion to accept the proclamation? Okay, then I think that we will hold the proclamation. I can get with Commander Womack. I think I'll see him later this week and make sure that we present that at an appropriate time to the American Legion. So, thank you. Next up, we have the Good Neighbor Award, and I'll recognize Barbara Glakis, who's here, from the Cultivating Community Initiative, to introduce the winner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilmembers. I'm Barbara Glakis, and I am a member of the town's Cultivating Community Initiative. In this season of thanks, I am very happy to be here this evening to present the winner of the town's annual Good Neighbor Award. The Good Neighbor Award is meant to recognize citizens within neighborhoods who have gone over and beyond the call of duty to help out their neighbors and who do things to make their neighborhoods a better place to live. Members of our committee do not make these nominations. They come from Herndon residents themselves. We are pleased to announce that this year's winner is Mr. Roy Cooper. Mr. Cooper, would you please come down and meet the mayor right in front of the dais here?
I'll wait till I get my cue from Barbara. They have a fancy award.
All right, so before you go anywhere, I'd like to talk a little bit about why you won this award. Your neighbors wrote to us to tell us that you're always helping everybody in the neighborhood who needs a hand. They especially remember how you were so helpful to your neighbor Lou, who recently passed away from ALS. Your neighbors remember how you mowed Lou's backyard, were always available to help Lou with tasks, large and small, including just spending some time with him over a glass of wine. Your neighbors note that you're not only a great neighbor to your own complex in Lilian Chase, but also to your other adjacent neighborhoods, such as the International Apartments and Herndon Middle School. They tell us, for example, that you take time to take care of the local grounds, to cut down dangerous tree limbs, or to kill poison ivies in the area, so that such things don't harm the local children as they play. Your neighbor's sentiments are summed up by the following statement that they told us. They said, quote, "Roy is a proud citizen of Herndon, and we're blessed to call him our neighbor and friend," unquote. Roy, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Are any of your neighbors here?
Oh, yes, they're all here.
You're not off the hook. You're not here for this.
Talk into the look better.
And Grace, smile.
Of course.
Look happy.
That wasn't nice.
I want to see that.
Absolutely.
That's going on Instagram.
If you'd like to speak, you can say that you are.
You can say no.
That's it.
Yeah.
I guess I have the podium for a second.
Right here.
Yeah, you should.
I just try to let you know.
I don't want anybody on the spot, but you'll certainly love it.
I'm very honored by this and humbled by this. I was very surprised by this. It's interesting, as a Midwest farm boy, we would not have done what I did as a farm boy without my neighbors. And I find it, I'm glad there's an award for this, that people hear about this, because as I talk to more and more people in the neighborhood, even this evening I was talking to somebody, they're like, "Yeah, Roy, you just do things most folks don't do." And I wish that would go away. So I hope the word gets out there and people realize just doing the right thing with your neighbors benefits the whole community. So, hopefully you can use that comment somewhere over there and people get the works. I didn't know about the award until a young lady came to my house and said, I'm like, "Are you after me?" They said, "No." So, that is it. Just very humbled by this, and neighbors need each other. Learned as a young man growing up, and just want to convey it to where I live now. So, thank you. Very humbled.
Yeah, when I approached him at his house, he thought I was coming after him. I know I looked pretty ferocious.
You're like, "I'm not zoning. I promise."
Yeah. While I'm here, I wanted to mention or remind the public that the Cultivating Community Initiative is also sponsoring the Dress Up Herndon for the Holidays Contest, which is coming up soon. That'll be on Monday, December 11th. That contest is where we go out and judge holiday yard lights. So I wanted to put everybody on notice to decorate your front yards. We're going to be coming around on Monday night, December 11th, to judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs? Ms. Olem?
My mom is still here for a couple of weeks. Give me a call. We've been making the rounds in Herndon. Gracie is up from Alabama, so if you want to see her, give me a buzz.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. Just three quick things. One, if you haven't signed up for the Herndon Parks and Recs Turkey Trot, this happens this weekend. Go ahead and do so. It's a great little race for a great cause. We're also collecting food. Two, I want to congratulate the Vice Mayor and our two police officers, Denise Randall and Steve Thompson, who competed this last Saturday in Dancing with the Services, which is a ballroom dance competition they train for to raise money for three charities. So I want to congratulate them and kudos to all of them for taking the time to raise money for good causes.
Are you going to demonstrate for us?
We should have asked you to.
Maybe next week.
It was a wonderful evening for a wonderful cause, and I want to thank the PD for being such good sports about it as well. And last but not least, we're all excited about the downtown redevelopment, and I know a lot of people have expressed concern over what that's going to do in the immediate future as construction continues. So, we have asked the town manager, we've asked Parks and Recs, what are we doing? And we're being, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a squeeze. The downtown will be a bit of a mess. You will be able to park there. Please continue to patronize your favorite downtown businesses. They will all be open and ready for business. You may use the W and O D Trail. That won't be impacted, and yes, the Herndon Festival will continue. So, just check our website. We're going to have some really good news about all those things. So, life in Herndon continues. It just continues with a little bit of bulldozers in the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First thing, I want to thank everyone who was at the Veterans Day Memorial on Saturday. It was a cold crisp day, about 41 degrees colder than last year, but it was a great ceremony nonetheless. I want to thank the Madam Vice Mayor for her wonderful words that she spoke at the ceremony. Also, I want to thank the American Legion for everything they did with that, the Cub Scouts with the presenting of the colors, the Women's Club, and also the Girl Scouts helping them out with the refreshments afterwards, and Cooper Middle School in regards to them singing the National Anthem. It was a really nice ceremony and really gave, it made it a nice reminder of why we're here today. And I also want to say, anyone watching on TV, the Herndon Youth Council will be meeting December 7th, our first meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the conference room, which is right over here. So I'm looking forward to that. Very excited. I started taking notes, because I know they're going to have a lot of great questions that I probably won't be able to answer. So, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now that the comprehensive agreement with Comstock has been signed and the design phase is starting, it is time to look at some issues that may have been eclipsed by the downtown redevelopment effort. The Herndon Festival, including the carnival, will be held in the same downtown location this spring as it has been in the past. The location will not be available in 2019 as construction proceeds. I was very happy to hear at the work session last week that the festival committee has identified and is working to complete arrangements for an alternate location in Herndon for the festival and carnival in 2019. The carnival is an important event for Herndon citizens, and I'm very pleased to see it continue. The coming of Metro Rail to the greater Herndon area will bring additional changes that will impact Herndon. I look forward to working to address those challenges and opportunities in the near future.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yes, I was about to forget you. Sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I wasn't calling on you, because you didn't dance.
I did do a cha-cha. It was very fun. Thank you for acknowledging that, and thanks so much for both the folks on the dais and other folks around the community that came to support me, and the two Herndon police officers, a Fairfax County Police Officer, a Herndon Fireman. It was a great event. Let's see. I wanted to acknowledge the Herndon Historical Society. So they're doing a great job of trying to keep the Train Depot open on Sundays so that folks can go in, because there's a lot of great Herndon artifacts in the museum, if you haven't been in there, in the Train Depot. So they're recruiting volunteers from 12 to 3 on Sunday, many Sundays, as they can get someone to be there, so that that can be open. I'll be there, I think, November 26th, and if folks are part of that or want to get more involved, please look at Herndon Historic Society's Facebook page and learn how to get more involved. Also, I realize since we don't meet the next two weeks, we won't meet again before the Herndon Holiday Homes Tour happens. So it's always the first Saturday of December, so it's December 2nd. If you've never been, or you always go, make sure you go. It's always an amazing event where five generous people open their homes to 300-plus strangers, and their houses are decorated, and it's just this warm, festive, beautiful event. So I highly encourage you to attend that. That same night, there's the tree lighting at 5:00. So lots going on once the holiday season starts. December 9th and 10th, you've got the Model Train Show happening in the Herndon Municipal Center. And of course, thanks to the Herndon Women's Club, who both hosted their fashion show this past weekend, which raises money for their charities, and also they're hosting the Wreaths Across America, which of course is a national event, and the Herndon Women's Club, thank goodness we have them, because they make sure that the veterans at our cemetery have a wreath on every grave. If you want to donate to that, please look at Herndon Women's Club online, and it's $15 a wreath, and then certainly they need help that day to actually stake those. It's a great Boy Scout activity or Girl Scout activity, as I look at the Boy Scouts in the audience. So feel free to reach out to them if you want more info on that, and that's on December 16th. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, we're teasing around about the event on Saturday night, but the Dancing with the Services event was really great. It was sponsored by the Fred Astaire Studio that's here in Herndon, and the Vice Mayor, along with a couple of our police officers, Steve Thompson and Denise Randalls participated, and it was really a great event. The house was packed. They had to move venues, didn't they, because they had sold so many tickets?
Yeah.
So it was just really great. They're going to make it an annual event, and we'll have to see who's dancing next year. I've got my eye around the dais. But thank you for doing that. It's really, I mean, it's really a risk. I mean, you're putting yourself out there, and you did great. So, congratulations on getting that behind you. As a reminder, the town will be closed next week on Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. I can't believe Thanksgiving is next week, but it is. The Vice Mayor mentioned that tonight is our last meeting this month. Our next meeting will be the work session on Tuesday, December 5th, and our entire calendar is, of course, on the town's website. Fall leaf collection is underway. We'll continue that through December 15th, and if leaves are still on the ground after that, we typically have extended that if needed. So get your leaves out to the curb. You don't have to bag them in the Town of Herndon. Thank you, DPW. We love that. And Mr. McKenna mentioned the Veterans Day observance this year. I was unfortunately unable to attend Herndon's because my daughter was in a soccer tournament in Poolsville, Maryland, in the 28-degree weather. But, I'm still not quite over that. But, what was really fun was during the break between a couple of the games, we went over to one of the local cafes to have lunch, and it was right at 11:00, and the Veterans Day observance in Poolsville was taking place on their town green, so we stopped and observed for a few minutes. So it was really nice to see that the same reverence for our veterans is happening all over the country. It was really a good feeling. So, yeah, since I couldn't make it here, I was glad I accidentally stumbled upon another observance in the town where we were. So, we'll see. Yeah, I already said leaf collection. Okay, this brings us to the comments portion of the agenda. This is the time where anyone can come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as one of our public hearing items. So if you're here about the lease or about the home daycare situation, this is not the time to speak. If you can come up, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Yes, ma'am. Are you here for the daycare? Okay, that will be another item. I'll call on you specifically for that. Yeah, no problem. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak?
Good evening. I'm here to ask the Herndon Town Council to develop a PACE program for Herndon businesses and commercial properties first and prepare for residential PACE in the future.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
My name is Jerry Gurgic, and I live in Ashburn, and I'm here at the request of my fellow environmentalist, Bill. So, what is PACE? If you haven't heard of it before, it's a new form of financing created to capitalize energy expenses in a public-private partnership. The public, by allowing use of a special assessment, technically invest 100% of the money as if a sidewalk or sewer were being installed. The property owner agrees to repay the public via the assessment. All PACE improvements are above code and therefore not required of the developer or property owner. A private lender provides the actual capital, and the private lender contracts with the municipality to be repaid from the special assessment collected. By financing energy efficiency this way, businesses are rewarded and not punished for using energy resources efficiently. And by design, a business can save more money on energy and water than they pay for the assessment, hence improving local business profitability. Since the special assessments can be as long as 25 years and can pass through to tenants, as are most utilities, and since they survive transfers, sales, foreclosures, and since they take market risk for energy-efficient improvements out of the equation, PACE is the ideal solution and the only workable solution to today's market demand. Customers want green at no cost, however, PACE is a bit better in that it can actually pay you to go green. PACE is truly a transformational approach to modernizing business infrastructure, and it is no wonder Scientific American calls PACE one of the top 20 world-changing ideas. Imagine, energy efficiency and solar with no loan on the books and no business capital expended just increased profitability. So I beg you to pick up the PACE. How does PACE benefit the town? For an example, the Hilton Universal Hotel in La La reduced electricity, maintenance, and water expenses by $1 million per year. They repaid the PACE investment dollars with an annual payment of $665,000. Corporately, the NOI increased $335,000 a year. There was a corresponding improvement in asset return on investment and return on equity, and financial risk at the facility was reduced. No corporate funds were invested, and on the balance sheet, no loan needed to appear. Simply a trade for two operating expenses, an assessment increase for energy savings. The hotel used $7 million in private PACE capital. The investment added $7 million upgrades, and this resulted in a $5 million value increase, or a $12 million value increase total, in which the city of Los Angeles collected the taxes. I see him out of time, so I would think that you can use this on the Comstock development, and many of your other businesses could benefit from such a program. I have plenty of information available, and you have this somewhere, so you can call me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We did get your correspondence earlier today. The packet was sent to us. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that is not one of our public hearing items? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Julie Sisak, and I'm at 108 Lilian Chase. And we didn't have this planned for tonight, but we did want to bring it forward at some point. We had an accident over on Locust Street at the evening of the Homecoming Parade, that a woman actually ran into three cars that were parked to the right of Locust Street, I guess eastbound, coming from the middle school. We've been seeing for a long time that the cars that park on either side of the Lilian Chase entry, that there's no room. There's no room for the buses coming out of the middle school. They have to swing out. It has been a very dangerous area for a lot of people, the children that are there walking and crossing. Our neighbors have seen, you know, people that pull in really quickly, that pull out. They don't park with a good amount of space from the curb to where people can actually swing, or the buses can swing in and out. So we were wondering if we can actually get that signage changed to be a no parking zone. It's between our drive, Lilian Chase, and the International Apartment entry, and also the exit from the middle school, those two sections. Further down the street, there's no parking there allowed, but this portion is, and we really think it's important for the kids especially. And since this accident, and it caused this woman to actually hit three parked cars that totaled two of them, we were really concerned. Yeah, it crushed all the glass around everything, and she had two children in the car at the time. So, it's just a concern we've been trying to bring up or wanted to bring up with the city council.
Okay, thank you. We do have a committee, a Traffic Engineering Enforcement Committee that meets and looks at those types of things. Would you mind sending us, or sending me an email just outlining what you just said, so we are sure we have our facts straight and we can have staff look into that and see if there's something we can do? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us to our first public hearing, which is ordinance 17024, to authorize a lease agreement between the Town and Suzanne Eaton Christmas Trees for seasonal tree sales. And if you're wondering who that is, this is Elvis's Tree Lot in downtown Herndon. So let us know if Elvis is going to be in the building. Mr. Ashton?
Assuming you adopt tonight, Elvis will be in the building. This was probably one of the, probably the second-most asked question during the downtown development hearing, where Elvis was going to buy his trees this year. And as I mentioned, the night of the public hearing, we had completed our agreement with Comstock and Suzanne Eaton to move forward with Elvis having his lot back at the corner of Center and Eldon Streets. What you had before you is a lease agreement for 30 days of sale of Christmas trees. So from the moment they start selling, they will have 30 days to complete their sales, and then they have to take it down. It will reimburse the town $4,000 for the use of this site for that purpose. So we will have the 30th year of Elvis on that corner, recognizing that that will be the last year that Elvis will be on that corner. But anyway, Madam Mayor and staff recommend- But anyway, Madam Mayor, staff recommends you approve this lease, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for staff on this one at all? Nope. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak on this lease agreement with Susan, or Suzanne Eaton Trees? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Any Elvis fans?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 170-24.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's still vacant lot, they'd be ashamed to not have Elvis there at least one more time.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, any, any other comments? Ms. Friedrichs?
We'd have a blue Christmas without him.
I can't top that, I'm sorry. No, I will say, we buy our tree there every year, and I have never seen him there, so I'm starting to be a little skeptical about this whole thing. One last year, maybe this is my year. Okay, we did have a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Olm, seconded by Councilmember Cunningham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. The next public hearing we have is Resolution 17G88 to consider special exception application SE 1705 for home-based child daycare use at 1010 Tyler Street. I'll open the public hearing and call on Lisa Gillarand for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. For the record, my name is Lisa Gillarand, and I'm the Director of Community Development. The application you have before you this evening, the special exception for 1010 Tyler Street, is to increase the number of children that can be cared for at the address from seven, which is the standard number allowed for a home-based business in the zoning ordinance, up to 12, which is the maximum, which is allowed with the granting of a special exception. This particular home-based daycare has operated since 2005. The hours of operation are generally 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but they do accommodate families that have unusual work schedules, and so they actually have some children who show up in the middle of the night in the early morning hours, sleep the remainder of the night at the home, and then the provider prepares them and gets them onto the bus to be picked up later in the day when they return from school. These children are usually between the age of three months and eight years, and there are employees other than the owner at the house to help care for the children. At least one of the children has special needs, and the county has registered on their website that this is a home daycare that does care for children with special needs. In fact, I was out doing a site visit, a drive-by actually, this morning, and I happened to be there when a child with special needs was being picked up by the school bus, and there were no issues, there was no problems with cars getting past the school bus, and it was all very orderly, and it worked very well. The property is located on Tyler Street, it is third, it's the third house on the east side of the street from Drainsville Road. It has a very large driveway that can accommodate eight cars. There's also, although there's no curb and gutter along the street, there is parking along the street, and there is also a sidewalk along Tyler Street as well. The neighbors, some of the neighbors do park along the street, in fact, when I was out there today, there was a horse trailer in one of the, in the street for one of the neighboring properties, and there was still plenty of room for the bus to make it through and for other cars. There was a question, you may remember, at Planning Commission concerning the fence. When I drove by today, it looks like the fence is complete, and so there really is no more issue with the ability to have the children safely contained in the rear yard. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application, and staff is also recommending approval. We do have several conditions, though, that we're recommending. The hours and location of outdoor activity, so that no outdoor play activity shall occur before 8:00 AM or after 8:00 PM. When playing outside, all children shall be within the fenced area, and the fence shall be constructed to ensure the area is fully enclosed with latching gates. In addition, for the permitted use, it's a zoning inspection permit from the town of Herndon shall be obtained prior to operation, and that will allow us to have a inspector onsite, make certain that the use is as described, that the fence is in fact enclosing the site, and other required features that the zoning ordinance mandates are the way they're supposed to be. It also states in the conditions that the use shall be limited to home-based child daycare with onsite play area and a maximum of 12 non-resident children. The conditions also state that county permitting, the applicant shall obtain all required approvals from Fairfax County Office for Child Care, Fairfax County Fire Marshal, the Fairfax Department of Health, as required per Fairfax County ordinances prior to operation. I should tell you that on the Fairfax County website, you can see that Fairfax County has recently, earlier this summer, done inspections, both the Fire Marshal, as well as I believe it was the Department of Health or Child Care, and in both cases, the establishment passed without issues. Also, state permitting, the applicant shall obtain all required approvals from the Virginia Department of Social Services per the Code of Virginia and other relevant state laws and policies prior to operation. That is, in fact, one of the reasons the applicant is seeking the special exception, because the state does want to make certain that the local jurisdiction has approved the daycare with 12 children, and that it meets the local zoning. In addition, transferability, this is a standard clause or condition that we put with particularly home daycare, and this condition states that this special exception does not run with the land and is not transferable to a different operator or to a different parcel of property. So if the home were to transfer to somebody else, they would need to come in and obtain a separate special exception. Staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council for staff? No? I have just a couple of questions. One is, what is the town's responsibility? Just to be clear, what are we regulating versus what the county or the state would be regulating?
The town, this always sounds bad when we say it, but we don't mean it this way. Our interest is as a land use and really the external impacts on the neighborhood. The state and the county are looking at the well-being of the children, making certain health, fire, safety is covered, and that the children are being cared for adequately, and that there are the correct number of providers onsite at any given time to take care of the children. So we are really looking for the impact on the neighborhood. That being said, when one of our inspectors goes into home daycare and is doing the inspection, if they see something that raises a concern, they will pass that along to Fairfax County.
Thank you. And have we had any concerns from the, the neighborhood there, neighbors that are concerned about this impact?
The Planning Commission received an anonymous letter that did have some concerns, several of the concerns raised, though, were more concerning health, safety, welfare. I have not heard from any of the other neighbors, and to the best of my knowledge, there has not been any other communication concerning this application, and the neighbors were notified of it, and the property was posted. So I would think that if there were concerns from the other neighbors, they would speak up, and in fact, we have a former employee who lives in close proximity to this house, and my guess is if there were issues, something would have been passed along to us.
Thank you. Any other questions from, from staff or from council? Sorry, it was, Ms. Olm?
And how long has this daycare been in Herndon?
It's my understanding that it's been operating since 2005.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? This is a public hearing, so I would invite the applicant down. Ma'am, would you like to come down and speak about the daycare to the council? Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Hello, my name is Maria Cordova. I work with, I worked with the kids around 2005, when I started my process here. Now it's time to increase, is the town approved. The, the last meeting, they told me I need to put a fence, cover everything, I did it as soon as I can, and I waited for your answers.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from council? Well, I'm impressed that you got the fence done already, it's not always easy to get those done in a timely manner, so, well, we thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this item? It's the same as before, state your name and address, for the record, you have up to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Friedrichs?
I am incredibly impressed at the-
Is there a motion?
Oh, is there? Sheila, Sheila needs to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheila, Ms. Olm, I apologize, I saw both your hands and I saw yours first. Ms. Olm?
I move approval of Resolution 17G-88.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion, Ms. Olm.
Okay, thank you very much. I was very impressed when I saw that Mrs. Cordova wanted to have a 24-hour daycare. My oldest son was in daycare, we chose a daycare that did have 24-hour care. I didn't normally need it, but there were a couple of occasions when I had to work late and my husband was out of town, so I was able to pick him up at 8:00 or 9:00 PM, which was awesome when you're a working parent. And I found that I had several colleagues, I worked in a hospital, that needed daycare when they worked the night shift. So you have firefighters, police officers, and people that work in healthcare that are gonna have to work 24 hours a day, and also people that work in the other service industry jobs such as hotels. So I think this is going to be a great asset to the town, and that you can take care of special needs, I think is an excellent asset for people in our community or that work in our community, so that they have something here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Sheila said. Youth is our, obviously our greatest asset that we have, and the fact you're stepping forward and being responsible about, that's really important. I remember not so long ago, well, maybe a long time ago, actually, I was daycare as well at Busy Bee at the United Methodist Church, and that was my first interaction with people in regards to a social interaction, so what you're doing is very important, and I wish you all the best, and I'm definitely for this, and I, it's fantastic that you, not only with special needs, but people that have unusual hours, because I grew up in a family where my parents, you know, we were open 365 days a year in a newspaper shop, and the only difference between Christmas Day and Christmas Eve was I opened up at 6:00 instead of 5:00 in the morning, so I can appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
The other members of council have said what I wanted to, but I am incredibly impressed with the hours and the services you provide, and I'm really happy that you want to expand your offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Vice Mayor?
Yep, I will just echo that, so you know you have support from, from the rest of us. Again, I wrote the same things, for me, it's that you offer this really unique service. Certainly it is, that's such a big asset for, for parents who also want to have home daycare as opposed to other types of daycare, and, and yet, the hours and the special needs is the unique aspect of that in addition to the, the home that you offer. You've been, you've been in business since 2005, so that gives me a lot of comfort as well, because, again, as, as Ms. Gillarand mentioned, really it's the state who manages a lot of that, but of course, we don't want anything, and you don't either, we want to make sure that it is well-run, and certainly that gives me a lot of peace of mind as well, that it's, it's well-run, and as they mentioned, the one letter really talked much more about what the State of Virginia regulates, not what we do. I can tell you, I walk by your property quite often, and it always looks well taken care of, and, you know, I haven't seen any issues or any, any parking, it's a really quiet street that seems to accommodate this well. So thank you very much for providing that service.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Well, I concur with my colleagues, I know that quality childcare is expensive and difficult to find, so thank you for providing that in our, right in our neighborhoods. I am pleased that we, there seems to be support in the neighborhood for it, since the council did not receive any comment negative or, or otherwise, so, and I don't give a lot of credence to a letter that someone won't sign their name to, so I congratulate you, and I think that I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And that motion carries. Congratulations. We have several items on our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries, and that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
The Vice Mayor was on that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we stand adjourned at 7:45 PM. You nailed it.
[inaudible]